Okay, I'm going to call the meeting through. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone. Please rise for Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everyone. The first things on the agenda we have are the homeowners associations. Is anyone from Edgebrook Downs here? Adam Lerner? I know Adam's not here because I, he's not, um... What about Lots of Vane? Anyone here from Lots of Vane? Did I say it wrong? Okay, give me a hard time. Uh, or Country Club Metal Steven, you're here, right? Any comments for us?
I was hoping that the board can reopen the, you know, we've been trying to get the flock cameras in our neighborhood, you know, and we've gone through a lot of steps. And I just wanted to hope that maybe this year the board can start going forward. I mean, security is a big issue, you know what I mean? And we did a lot of things with the sheriff department. We've agreed to, you know, since we're half-public and half-private, that's our problem, I think we're having, you know what I mean? Because of the private part of our roles. But I really, the homeowners, it's hard to get a group of homeowners to agree on something, you know, and they have agreed on it, which is a good thing, you know what I mean? Which is about the only thing homeowners ever... And I just was hoping that the board could rethink a look at it. You know, we're giving up, we're paying for the service, we're paying for the cameras, you know, and, you know, we're really not even going to use the footage because Lake County is going to have the authority, the sheriff's going to have the authority for the footage. You know, the footage is not going to be available to us or to any resident, you know, only if there's an incident, Lake County Sheriff is going to access the footage. So I don't know what else we can do as a subdivision, but, you know, I think that people feel that it's a sense of security. I mean, you, you know, over the last eighteen months and twenty-four months, you see flock cameras everywhere. You know, every shopping center, you know, every apartment complex seems to have them. So I just was hoping that the board, maybe this year, you know, we can try to come to a conclusion, you know, we were able to, you know, get the spots for the cameras. We were able to, you know, like, we went through all the groundwork and, you know, I know the board is divided on it. But, you know, I think to give these residents a little sense of security, even if, you know, you see that up there, it's a sense of security, even though, you know, what is it really going to do? But I just think, you know, with our subdivision being public and private, you know, it's a cutthroat, you know, for a lot of people. So if there is a, if there is an incident, you know, somebody might use that as a cutthroat, you know, they would be caught on the camera, you know what I mean? That the sheriff could use. So, you know, and again, I know there's a lot of issues, you know, about, you know, subdivisions that have a private, you know, because they have access to the footage. You know, did my husband go out, you know, with his girlfriend at twelve o'clock, you know, or something like that? So we, you know, we're not looking for that. All I want to do is give our residents their, you know, sense of security and, you know, we'll have no access to these at all, but we're paying for them. You know, so it's costing the village stuff. And it gives the sheriff another tool in case there's an incident somewhere and they feel a car or something came through that subdivision, you know, they can look through it. So I just wish that the board, you know, maybe this year would be, you know, open to trying to, you know, look at the idea again.
Yeah, their license plate readers is what they are. They're not taking pictures, it's just license plates.
I see security. When you say security is really an issue? Like, is it just appealing or is there some, what's driving it?
Right, well, you know, we've had multiple robberies in our neighborhood, okay? And, you know, you know, like, I think that might deter some of the robberies, okay? You know, a lot of the robberies have been associated with, you know, vendors that have been at people's houses, you know what I mean? You know, that's a big thing. But, you know, again, you know, to, you know, you know, again, when you, you feel a sense of security, you know, I mean, that, you know, I mean, you know, when you lose your sense of security, you know, and then we have a lot of older residents, you know, in the neighborhood, so, you know, and, and I mean, the Lake County Sheriff does a great job, you know, they check on the older residents. They call every morning, there's one or two ladies in the neighborhood, they call every morning at nine-thirty, they don't answer the phone, they dispatch a car there. You know, it's a great program. You know, they have the house watch, you know, keep people going on vacation and they do the house watch. I mean, so, you know, like, I just, I just think if the neighbors saw them up there, you know what I mean? And like, if I was a burglar, okay, you know what I mean? If I saw that, I'm not going to go into that subdivision. You know, I'm going to stay away from that. So I just, I think the issue is the private and the public roles. I think that's the problem. But, you know, maybe I'm wrong, you know, but, you know, it would be no cost to the village, no cost to anything, it would just be another deterrent and another, you know, you know, thing that the Lake County Sheriff could use, you know, if they need to find somebody or a license plate reader.
Thank you.
So if I put this on agenda, would anyone consider looking at it again at a future board meeting?
I just, why did you disable it last time, didn't it?
Because we didn't have enough votes to move it through, so.
It was going to come back in January-ish.
That's what I thought.
It just never came back.
Resident server prime.
Back for the village manager channel.
Yeah, because we disabled it.
They have their own cameras installed, correct? Are you worried about who is entering the division? Capture that image? If a robbery happened, the houses are equipped with a camera, so everything, every house has a camera. Ten square, and this is the difference. You know, who is passing by, who is near your garage, who is near your house? Everything is recorded on your personal home camera. So why do we need additional street cameras to look at the people who is coming?
Well, the license plate readers, okay? So, you know, what it's going to do is if there's a suspicious vehicle, if someone sees a vehicle and says it was a gray Honda, you know, license plate this, okay, they can track that license plate, Lake County Sheriff, okay? You know, if there's a suspicious vehicle, okay? Everybody does have their cameras. They still get robbed, okay? Because, you know, the robbers are a lot smarter than that right now, okay? I mean, I'm not saying it's the best of terms, but, you know, the subdivisions that have them, okay, and I don't have the facts, but the subdivisions that do have them, I think have had very little to none activity, police activity in there at all. Because, I mean, the people are going to stay away from there, you know what I mean? I just, I just, I just feel that, you know, like I said, it was, it, it, being a homeowner president, it's so hard to get anything passed by, you know, two-thirds of the majority. And, you know, and especially when it comes to where they have to bring money to the table, and they're all willing to do this.
So you would all relook at it if we get it together?
I would.
Okay.
The cameras are everywhere. They're everywhere, nothing sacred, they know everything they want to know about you. They know where your phone is, right?
What was the objection?
Um, there's some privacy issues and things like that.
Privacy issues and where was it going and how was it being used? The process wasn't actually clarified for us when we were asking the question.
It was getting closer to it. I mean, the other thing was that now, and just, Steven just said it too, that the sheriff police will be the only organization that'll have access to the data on those cameras. And then, you know, they'll be able to, if something happens, they'll be able to get that information.
I know anything you see on those cameras, like even in my neighborhood, when they're doing something crappy they're not supposed to be doing, they're very good at hiding their faces, not finding ways, they leave their car down the road. They don't, they don't, they perfectly know how to avoid a house camera. They've all learned that, so, I mean, yeah, they know the streets. I'm sorry about privacy, but honestly, if you're standing for this, then you're not even aware of that.
All right, Chris is one of the main objectors on the board for the flock cameras. I'm very opposed to them. I think it's a Fourth Amendment violation. It allows, in our case, coming to us instead of a private entity, the government to basically surveil innocent people on the street. If I'm driving up and down the street, I don't think it's anybody's dang business if it's taking a picture of my license plate nor image of the car and storing that in a database. Flock, the company, takes all of the data and it can put together the path that the car travels. So essentially, they can surveil anybody based on the data that they're acquiring from all of their cameras throughout the country. Plus, when you look at some of their, some of the documentation on it, they're allowed to do whatever they want to do with the data. They can sell it, they could give it away, they could give it to another investigative body and track people down. As an example, if Chris Borowski went to a Trump rally, they could track my vehicle and know that I was at the Trump rally or a Biden rally. And that's an easy issue, it's the database. So they're building a database which is essentially tracking your car, and they identify your car not only by the license plate, but on the physical characteristics of it. If it has a dent, if it has a sticker, they've got pictures of all that. They take all that data, put it all together, and they could track your whereabouts and where you're going. To me, that's a Fourth Amendment violation. So that, that to me is the scary part about it. A good case in point of that was when the January sixth, whatever, happened.
Insurrection.
Okay. Whenever that happened, Chase Card took all of their credit card data and they gave it to the FBI and said, "Oh, you want to find out who was there that weekend? Here's all the credit card data of all the people who went to Washington DC that weekend because we tracked their transactions and we know who was there from out of town." The irony of it is, I've got a son who lives in Maryland, lives in Washington DC. I was going to go visit him for the holiday. So if that was, well, that's what Chase did, because they own the data, they gave it to the FBI and said, "Look, we sorted the data, here are the people you should go after." To me, that's a real problem. There was no search warrant, there was no due process. Chase just said, "Hey, we own this data, we're going to give it to the FBI because we want to." But they could do that for a Trump rally, they could do it for a Biden rally, they could do it for whoever they want to do it for. And that's an easy issue. When this thing came to the board the second time, I asked for the contracts. Show me the contracts, what does it read? What does Flock have the ability to do with that data? And you hear somebody saying, "Oh, we're going to delete in thirty days." Are you? What do you do with it between today and thirty days? Who's got that data? Who's controlling it? Who's storing it? Who's giving it away? Who's putting it into another database? And to me, that's kind of an issue that needs to be explored. If that data truly is secured, okay, that's one argument, but I don't know if it is. Illinois, I don't know, what's happened between January and now? There's a case that has been filed against the Illinois State Police that they're using an unconstitutional system of surveillance through the license plate reading cameras. And that was just filed a couple of weeks ago, three months ago. So there's a lot of things to think about. It's not as simple as, "Oh, license plate reader, to your point, everybody's got them." I get it, it drives me nuts because I don't want Flock to know that Chris Borowski is driving down the street in Arizona today, in Maryland tomorrow, in Illinois the next day. It's none of their damn business. And to me, that's Fourth Amendment, Rita.
Well, I don't disagree with, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I read a book on how AI started. Credible book, incredible law, incredible research. They've already got all kinds of stuff on everybody and that's how they get it. Part of me says, "Well, okay, so we're part of the problem if we agree to more." If you're out in public, you don't have an expectation of privacy, legally, legally. You know, if you're out there, you're out there. You can take your picture, whatever. So, you know, my, my take on it is, they've already got more than we know they have on each of us. They use it, they sell it, we get zip, right? That's what ticks me off. They got my data and you're selling it, then where's my piece, right? But if it helps people sleep at night, if there's a robbery, and you're right, Denise, you know, when on Nextdoor where they show you what their doorbell picked up, you can't tell Jack about whatever's on there, right? You know, you can't see the stuff.
The FBI doing raids on homes where they're literally putting masking tape over people's rings, ring cameras, right?
I know.
I mean, so it's good for one shoe or?
But not good for the other, right?
I know.
So I'm pretty passionate about it. I've been probably the most vocal about it. So if you want to have a conversation, I'd be happy to, but I'd really like to understand the contracts that you have in place. You know, we hear stuff like, "Oh, the sheriff can see data and nobody else can." Okay, prove it. Well, we've never seen it.
Well, I think the sheriff did write to the village here, I mean, I can look back at the emails here, the sheriff did write, because that was one of the speculations. And now, if, you know, if Flock's able to sell that stuff, that needs to be out of contract. They cannot sell that, okay? If you go to Target, you go to Walmart, you get photos, you, you know, you're getting a camera.
But that's private property.
But, you know, again, you know, we have some private, some public, you know what I mean? That type of thing. I do agree with you, you mean that, you know, you don't need to be tracked. We're not, we're not looking to track people, okay?
Well, I believe that to be true, I just think Flock is...
Yeah, so, I mean, if you need before the next meeting or a guest on the agenda to get a Flock, you know, contract written up and I can call back to the Lake County Sheriff, and because, you know, we, you know, Flock and the Lake County Sheriff talk a lot on this, you know, and we gave up like all rights, you know, because we didn't want the rights. You know, I don't want, I don't want homeowners calling me as homeowner president, "Hey, you know what I mean, my son's home at three o'clock in the morning on Saturday." I don't, I don't want that, you know, ever, yeah, and they'll lose that, so.
The sheriff, the choice.
Yeah, yeah. So if, you know, if you think that we can get it on the agenda in the future, then I can work with Flock and the Lake County Sheriff and try to get those contracts all written up.
So here's what I'd like to do, is I think I have enough support to get it on the agenda. I'd like to have some of these things. It may not be next week, it'd be, you know, whatever it is, I mean, in two weeks, but let's try to resurface everything and then, you know, Chris, if you could help with some of, you have the greatest amount of concerns, make sure that we address those concerns before bringing it before the board. Again, let's get it on agenda.
And it's okay with you, Chris, I mean, once I, you know, you know, recent contact with Flock and Lake County Sheriff, you know, we just all try to coordinate together, you know what I'm saying, to see if it's, you know, what you're thinking is right, you know what I mean? Because what we're thinking as homeowners, you know, you're saying that Flock can sell this stuff, you know what I mean?
You're thinking it's not, there's no leak between when it's captured and when it goes to the sheriff?
Yeah.
He's asserting, yeah, no, they have all kinds of choices to, you know, in the middle.
I don't know, actually, I mean, the data I read on...
Americans Civil Rights Union put together a real nice article. They're opposed to the flock camera.
There's a whole folder.
So the ACLU says, "We don't like it because..." Fourth Amendment violation. And there's...
They have some suggestion that says, "Look, if you're a mayor and you're going to do this, first thing is you put ordinance in place that limits or regulates what can be done with that data and if it's..." And how long the data is live and who has access to it.
We don't have an ordinance in place, we talked about that last time. We just never got to that point. And the other thing that ACLU said, it's one thing to check if somebody's on the bad list, but if a car goes by, check the bad list, and if they're not on the bad list, delete the data. Because otherwise, somebody's building a tracking database. And there's one other thing, I can't remember what they said, but it was like, delete the data in seconds, not thirty days. Like, if nothing bad happens overnight, that data's got to be wiped clean. Pictures, images, everything. Even the metadata that said that car was driving down the street and it should be deleted. So read the ACLU article as well. And I know we've had a conversation with your residents and they came in here and said, "Oh, Fourth Amendment." What do you mean, Fourth Amendment? We all sat there, raised our right hands and said, "I swear to defend the Constitution." Not interpret it, not change it. We swore to uphold the Constitution. It says Fourth Amendment, you know? So the surveillance of people is a real issue. I think it asks, I know, I see it all, municipalities have them, they're everywhere.
Yeah, Buffalo Road just, you've got swallows in the last three months.
Buffalo has them too, I tried to...
Get it.
But years ago, the big fear was, you know, one of these days we're all going to have implants in our heads so we can be found and we can be, you know, we can be tracked and whatever. I got to tell you, anyone who carries one of these, I've already done that already.
Yes, but you can turn, but you can turn that off.
No, you can't.
Yes, you can. Trust me, you can turn those off. You don't have to carry one. But you have no choice when you're...
No, we all do.
When you're going to the house. I get it, I get it, but you can turn it off if you choose to turn it off. With the flock camera, you can't. It's not your choice.
Trustee Jamil, you had a comment?
Good question. As an HOA, if you ask consultant with a legal, did you get a legal opinion? Suppose somebody's walking down the street and he doesn't know that he's been tracked, license plate has been in some data. If he ends up suing the HOA, big time. So did you take any legal opinion on this as an H O A?
Well, you say walking or driving?
Driving.
Driving, okay. Well, I mean, there's signs, you know, as you're, you're coming in, all the flock cameras have signs that, you know, you're being, you know, recorded. I'm not sure of the legality part of it, you know what I mean?
Did you take any legal opinion?
Yeah. In my opinion, I don't think, I don't, if you, if you forewarn people and there's a warning up there, I don't think, you know, a lawsuit's going to hold up. And maybe I'm wrong, okay? But, you know, I mean, you know, you see that, you know, you're greeting on cameras and stuff like that and, you know, if you fall on a park, you know, they're going to use that footage, you know, for you. And I just want to make it, you know, I want to make the board happy, I want to make the residents happy, you know, in the subdivision, you know? And if there's a medium that we could do, you know, I mean, you know, that would be great, to work forward to. And I, it's not an overnight solution. We've been working on this for a long time, you know, as the HO, you know, the homeowners, you know, president, you know, we spent almost an hour and a half on it, I was surprised, you know? Everything was, everything was so far. And I'm taking up a lot of your time now, you know? You know, we, you know, I can, I can get more updated stuff and we can, you know, carry on.
Please don't have the flock salespeople call me again. I've had too many of those phone calls.
Yeah.
Steven, anything else? But, no, thank you for being here today and thanks for bringing that up.
Well, thank you for inviting us.
We will follow up.
Yeah.
Chris will be our lead on this one. This Chris right here, Chris Parkman.
Well, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Anything else you want to bring up? No?
Just a great community.
Thank you.
What's moving into the season, that's what I want to know.
Oh, so Mike wants to make it a banquet facility.
Great.
So...
That would be fabulous, I think, for the village.
Yeah, so looking forward to seeing that. And there, he's got a few other plans, but the banquet facility is a big part of it. So bringing it back to what it was. Doing improved. If Mike Okin shows up or listens to the recording, we'll make sure he knows that. So, but he's the one doing that, so, thank you.
Well, thank you for the great job you guys do, you know, with the community, you really do.
Thank you for what you do, appreciate it. All right, so time for public comment. I'm guessing that start with Denise because she's here, so.
Same old, same old, sorry guys, five to eleven. I'm very concerned about protecting. That house is now under contract. It went under contract on July 1st. We, as a homeowners association, have not yet heard from them, but I know they're going to be requesting information. At which time we can tell them that, A, in the listing, he did not put the right numbers for the assessment money and more, that's incorrect, and we need to tell them, we need to let them know. And also, we got the road thing passed. Mind you, this was my loan, but we got the road thing passed.
Congratulations.
And that still requires a $2,500 assessment from each home, a week, twenty-three to eighteen. That was awesome. So that's going to get done, so they need to know about that. And they're buying a protected wetland, and I'm sure they have no clue. And a wetland that has been damaged and needs to be fixed. So I kind of wondered where we are on that, because I'm going to need to tell these people, and...
Yeah, I mean, we sent the letter to the homeowner, you know, telling him we need to respond or it's going to go to adjudication, as it's under contract, to kind of put some dots together, connect some dots on that. So I'll talk with Chris about what action we can take now since it's under contract and the previous owner...
And this is, you know, I'll, we'll take the job, we need to listen to people. You know, I don't know if that want to continue, and that killer contract, I personally don't care. You know, this is a man who begged to have drainage so that his basement wasn't flooding. And his neighborhood would be allowing him to do that, with a $10,000 job, and paid a contractor. He didn't clean up the drainage in the neighbor's yard, and he, you know, and then he put it in someone else's name who has it now. And I brought the copy of the email, if you guys want it, where I wrote to this guy and said, "Hey, you know, you bought a place and the wetlands have been damaged, whatever." He said, "Yes, I had time to hire a ecologist to, you know, fix all of that." And he just, you know, you as a neighborhood allowed the man to drain the wetlands and now the cranes can't raise their babies there. And I'm like, yeah, no, that wasn't the deal. The deal wasn't, and not just so that the basement didn't flood. But he just took it upon himself to, and then he brought in a lot of bill. And now there's all kinds of invasives. As someone who is rebuilding quarries and we're working pretty hard at it, it's heartbreaking to see. And I just don't want new people to come into my neighborhood and then I've got to what? Go after them? I mean, it's just not fair. So as long as it's moving forward, I'm going to give them the heads up that it's happening.
Chris, you got this?
They were mailed a certified letter a couple of weeks ago and they were given, I think, thirty days to respond with the remediation plan.
He doesn't respond to anything.
Yeah.
And he's waiting to close and get out.
So you all figure out next steps with a bit of help from this guy over here? Okay.
Do you want a copy of the email that he sent to me that was two years ago? He claimed he was fully aware and he was going to take care of it?
Sure, you can send it to me.
I have it, I'll get it to you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for getting your roads done too.
Ah, it's been twenty-six years.
Wow.
So excited.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks for what you do. Anything else? Any other comment in the room or I'll turn online? Does anyone have any comment online? Jeff?
Yeah, hey, good evening. Thank you, Jeff, I live at sixteen seventy-two Ellis Avenue. I reached out to the village about a month ago now or so, asking about the village code regarding the establishment of apiaries on residential properties and have been told that it required a special use permit. And so similar to what Long Grove had done back in 2011, number of communities in the county have carved out language within the code, specifically allowing for, for the hives to be installed on the property, reducing the cost for the fees associated with them to something more consistent with an accessory building, if not eliminating it outright. And so what I was curious about before approaching the plant commission was to find out whether or not the village board had ever previously considered amending the codes to specifically allow for apiaries, or if not, if the board would be open to considering it.
Hey, Chris, you want to speak on this one too?
Hey, Jeff, this is Chris. Just a question, what do you mean aviary? Are you talking about specifically just beehive installation or you're talking about a honey house and a whole deal?
No, just beehives.
How many beehives were you looking at, putting in?
Just two.
So I'm kind of in a unique position. I've had, I live in Long Grove on the north side of town. I've had bees in my backyard for, I don't know, thirty years. And frankly, I didn't even know there was COVID. When I put them in, I don't know if there was. I think, I think I'm grandfathered in because I had beehives in place for thirty years. And at the peak, I've only had six, right now I've only got one, kind of thing. So, you know, my personal viewpoint is that we should do whatever we can to facilitate honeybees in backyards because obviously you know how decimating the honeybees are in the world and how valuable they are. And, but anyway, that's just my personal viewpoint. I think Chris Parkman has an official viewpoint or maybe Bill has some official comments, but, but I, I mean, I agree. I think... I think what we could do to facilitate residents to put beehives in their backyard and also educate the neighbors is really important because honeybees are very misunderstood. They're not aggressive, they're very defensive. And really, if you don't mess with their beehives, you know, they really don't bother people. It's people's, you know, kind of misunderstanding that bees include osps and yellow jackets and hornets and all that stuff. It interferes with your picnics in the summer, but, but honeybees generally don't do that. They usually don't care to drink your soda. They're usually out foraging for real food, like flowers, pollen, nectar. So, so I'm a big believer in it. I think the village should do what we can to make it easy for people to put a couple of beehives in their backyard as long as it's, you know, positioned well and away from the neighbors and maybe get neighbor approval, I don't know. from the neighbors, and maybe get neighbor, neighbor approval, I don't know. But, but I, I'm a big believer in it, because I think it can be done, and, uh, we see it done in, you know, in Chicago environments, in very small lots and all that kind of thing. Anyway, that's just my personal viewpoint, that has nothing to do with process or control.
I unofficially, I, I would like to see zero road bump, road bump in between people putting in beehives. I will say, on my road, I'm sure there are no permits. There are three beehives I could walk through all my house.
Really? And they're not, what's proposed?
Yeah, I, I would, I would like as little road bump as possible. I, 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 so.
What is the existing code?
Special use permit is required to get it.
Oh.
So, so with, with the.
Have you ever had anybody apply for one?
At that point, Alex, actually.
Really?
So, I mean, so, I mean, Vic, we could, this is something we could look at?
Yeah, I mean, currently, it's within the definition of expanded agricultural use, which is a special use permit under our residential districts. Um, the, the village board can certainly carve that out, or create an exception for, uh, beehives where they are within, uh, certain setbacks or limitation in size. All of that's within the realm of possible, it's just a matter of getting some direction and, uh, holding the necessary hearings before it comes back to the board for action.
How much is the special use time?
A lot of money. I don't know what.
I think so.
It's a lot, and it's a big process.
If, 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 if showing up, if showing up.
A hundred dollars in fines, or in fees, excuse me, and then $5,000 retainer. So, six hundred.
Yeah, I.
It's an oversight. I've been here a long time, nobody's stopping us.
I think your price is anybody apply for one.
Right.
I don't even have money. I originally rebounded on heaven, and it's been added that in, and something allowed, we had no idea. Wow.
Why do we compel, why are we compelled to regulate this?
Exactly.
Well, the, the only issue is, you know, if you do get, I mean, could, Jeff, you can jump in, but you do have allergies to these things, right? So maybe a neighbor breathes out, or maybe, you know, that's why I asked the question about how many beehives. Couple beehives, not a big deal, but what if I want to do 60, or if I want to do 100, and I want to harvest honey in my, in my garage for, you know, as kind of a sideline business? I think then it starts getting to the point of, you know, it could get out of control. But I think some limited number of beehives, I, I don't know what the right number is, we probably have to throw dart, but, you know, I, and it also depends on your acres. If you're on three and a half acres versus quarter acre, I think there ought to be some limits to how many beehives you can have.
I mean, other communities that we work with do allow them as permitted uses, but they are, as you suggest, um, related to the size of the lot. They're also subject to setbacks and, uh, oftentimes screening. Um, but, you know, the village has long had this, uh, included within the expanded agricultural uses, and until now, I don't know that I ever recall anyone raising it as an issue one way or the other.
Well, it's not a problem.
I think it's more dangerous than the first one.
What'd you say?
Oh, yeah, for a person to get stung, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, but they're, if they're outside, that's a possibility.
Closer.
If you're in your honeysuckles, they're loaded with bees.
My son got stung, he highly allergic, I don't know if he has it.
So, so why don't we do this, um, because we are basically essentially like, um, putting legislation together in front of us? Um, let's, let's, um, I think the board's waited enough where there's, to give you some ammunition to start looking at what could we do differently, right? And to help Jeff out here with his ask, right? So.
Yep. Jeff, you're not putting beehives in this time of year, are you?
No, no, I was, I was looking to start, um, next spring, but I knew that I'd need to start early with working with the.
That makes sense, right? Yeah, I get it, understood.
All right, thank you for your comments, Jeff.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Um, if not, and we don't have any of the public safety folks here tonight, we'll just move to the consent agenda. We have two items on it, approval of the June 2024 bill warrant, and approval of the regular board meeting minutes from the June 25th, 2024 meeting, subject to non substantial revisions. There was a slight revision in the board packet, um, if you, if you read it, so, just a little more clarity on a couple items. And any, uh, any concerns, or somebody want to make a motion to?
Hi, Mr. O'Connor.
Yeah.
I'm disappointed. I had asked for a conversation with the HDLGVA before we released the money, and I see it's released, it's already been released. So, they do an amazing job, but we have, we've had, we've been meaning to have a conversation about some level of like, okay, what exactly are you doing? Not onerous. Um, and we had it, and then they were going to come back, and we've had problems with schedules, and I asked that we have a conversation, and it's gotten released, so I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
What, what, the result of abstaining?
I, 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 I just, I don't feel.
It's been released.
I know, it's been released. I'm, I'm unhappy, and I'm unhappy with you two, because you were the two that I had asked to have this conversation, so, um, you're right, I, there's probably no point at all of, and abstaining.
Yeah, that's too bad, though, because.
Yeah, they do good jobs, unless, but there is a process challenge.
Yeah, there was a whole other conversation, um, about even keeping it together, so.
I understand, but that's, that's not our concern.
Yeah.
That this was our process.
Okay.
So, they do a great job, but I, you know, just trying to say, because it comes through an SSA, we should be able to somehow say, what exactly is it getting used for?
Okay, fair.
Well, and that's not secret. They know that.
Okay, so that was a motion for the consent agenda, that's a.
Yes, it was.
Yes, I'll second Dr. Jamil's first.
Okay, so we, uh, so a roll call.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
Trustee Barowski.
Hi.
Trustee Kritzmeier.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Okay, I think.
Yes, that was, that was.
I, I think the motion carried, I was not sure.
I did, you're good.
Yeah, did, yeah, so you're good?
All right.
All right. All right, so, um, we have, oh, Barbara, you're going to have to go on video, that, thank you for doing that. Um, so we have a request for funding from the Midwest Sustainability Group, and I don't know who's going to set this up, you have a proposal. Um, Barbara, are you setting it up, or Rita, are you setting this up, or how's this going?
Um, there's, there, I'm not prepared to set it up, but I can give it back on. Go ahead, Barbara.
Okay, can y'all hear me okay?
Can, you don't have to be on video, though, I know you had a terrible, horrible accident, so if you feel.
Sorry, I had an altercation with the sidewalk, yeah. So, I'm here on Zoom, I plan to be there in person. Um, so this was, um, a couple of years ago, we were asked to bring in a proposal for the whole year all at once, rather than come in separate segments, but, um, President Jacob thought since so much is changing so quickly on the ground for us, it might be more helpful for the board if we split it into the, uh, third quarter for one and the fourth quarter. I know, um, trustee O'Connor has some interest in pursuing possibly getting Hawthorne Woods to fund the fourth quarter, so I guess that remains to be seen. There is a, a lot of additional work that's coming up, and we have some concerns. We always have to forecast about changing political climates, and there are a couple of things that have us concerned. Number one, and I think I told you this the last time I was there, the Tollway is currently doing their 10-year capital plan, they're spending a year deciding how they're going to spend their money. Our assessment of their situation is they're more in a position to fund Route 53 extension in this next 10 years than they were in the last 10 years, because they've already funded the, um, I-94, 294 work that they're doing now. So that's a concern. The second concern is suddenly, uh, the Illinois Department of Transportation, IDOT, decided to start a federal study on the 120 portion of this project, and as some of you are new, so this was all one project, um, the last go around, they called it the tri-county, excuse me, the tri-county access project, and it included the 120 bypass and the Route 53 portion. Um, so the, the Tollway stopped their interest in the project, but now IDOT is bringing back a federal study process to look at the bypass, and at the same time, the Tollway is, uh, considering their new capital plan, so this is concerning to us. We are working on both ends of that. Um, the other concerns we have are a possible change of administration, so we are working to get these parcels transferred from the Illinois Department of Transportation to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources to be turned into a protected area and trail. We are concerned that, uh, the current federal administration is more lenient in the use of their federal funds, so, um, I'll back up a little. The federal government funds, uh, well, technically CMAP, and then CMAP funds Illinois road projects with federal money. Some of the parcels were purchased with federal funds, so we're trying to break that all down, because this was over a 60-year period, how each parcel was purchased, and if it was purchased with federal transportation funds intended for highways, what does that mean? So, uh, the current administration would support using federal highway funds for, um, what we call active transportation for a trail. If there's a change in administration, that policy could change, so that's a concern. Um, we do, we have spoken to all three congressional representatives that, believe it or not, three different congressional, um, representatives represent the corridor, the 11 or 12 miles, so that's Congressman Snyder, Congressman Quigley, and Congresswoman Shikowsky, and all three are supportive of this, so we could go the federal route, but of course, they're all in the minority, so that's a bit of a concern. Or it could be, uh, if there's a change in the, um, leadership of the House, that could work to our advantage, too, in the next administration. So that's, um, kind of all going on. There's also a test case in the Pike, um, to test the environmental impact statement portion of the National Environmental Policy Act. I'm trying not to get too into the weeds, but that environmental assessment is how we have kept this at bay for 60 years, because, I guess, to put it in layman's terms, they can't build that road because it would be too environmentally damaging, and we have the National Environmental Protection Act to back us up on that. This test case, um, will, we assume, go to the Supreme Court, and if this is overturned, we feel we're very vulnerable there. So there's a real sense of urgency to get this land transferred as soon as possible. The administration's current position is that they wanted to wait till the plan is done to transfer the land, so we're going to try to ignite that, given the current climate.
Thanks for that summary, and I think, um, I don't know if it's appropriate to talk about, um, a recent Supreme Court decision, too, as well, that might strip some powers away from the Environmental Protection Agency and other federal agencies, right?
Right.
Um, which is coming into play here, so, um, the thought was, um, you know, by Barbara to try to keep moving fast on this, to see if this, we can't get the land transferred IDNR. So that's what this proposal is for. I did ask for it to be, I didn't want it to be all at once, I did want it to be for the work that's done this quarter, and step back and look to, to see, you know, what else needs to be done, something different needs to be done, and, um, so that's why, that's what we got here, so I don't know what questions the board has, um.
I think it's important to point out that, um, if we hired lobbyists to do this for us, which we had kicked around several years ago, like, let's, let's get a lobbyist, the, the fees for that would be four times, three to four times what this, um, entity is, what, what their pay comes down to. They're, they, with all of these numbers that Barbara, they're, they're approximately $232 an hour for the work that they do for this goal that's, you're right, 60 years old, which astounds me every time I think of it, but, um, um, we could never afford lobbyists for the, the money that we pay. The, uh, Mike Trupa, who is, uh, in marketing, and he, he, he's incredibly gifted with, uh, statements that he prepares for the organization when the news people call and say, you know, what's, what's going on here, what can you tell us about it? The man's incredible. He has donated so much of his time that it, you, you can't just keep taking. So, part of the money in this particular next, um, task, part of that is Mike Trupa and Wright, so, for marketing, I think it's in there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I do strongly feel that, that, uh, other communities will, and their residents, will benefit greatly from this if, if we can get it to the finish line. And the dollars that we have spent are incredible compared to what we've gotten from other communities. And, and it's like, you can't keep taking, it, it's, it's time to, to step up and, you know, throw some meaningful money into the pot to, to share some of this.
So, part of this is, let's not, um, as much so that we have time to have conversations, others to bring more to the table?
Or, or in addition, too, you know, this, it's, it, it's not going to be over this year or next year. It's, we're, we're, we, we, I remember back 30 years ago, when this thing started, you know, I, I'd rather not take it into 31 or 32 years, you know? And every, every time we get, like, right there, right there, it's, there, there's something, you know, it's the, the Bears Stadium and all that stuff, you know, like, what if we needed for cars and?
Can I ask a question?
Sure, sure.
So, obviously, this has been really good work that Barbara and the group have been doing. Seems to me like the goal is to get the transfer to the IDNR, right? Get it off IDOT books and get it officially on IDNR. My, my question is, and what? So, as we're going through the lobbying crisis, what are we actually asking for beside that? What does Long Grove want with that land? Besides being green, I get that.
No, we.
I get that, but what's our ask? What are we going to do with trails?
Trails, trails to, to, if, if this trail could take place, when you get further north Great Lake area, it could hook up to the, the, the trails that Great Lake has installed, along with the trails that go through the Grand Arm, uh, up near, um, Ammon, Ammon, um, Ammon Marsh, is it, I believe? Theoretically, you could get into the city of Chicago on the trail. And the point is.
We participate.
We don't have to fund it. It's been sitting there for off years and nobody.
So you have a trail. How does Chris Barowski use that? Does he drive his car to a village parking lot over there? Does Chris Barowski get in his?
Bicycle.
Pedal? Well, I mean, I'm serious, it's a real, I mean.
So this is part of what this was going to be all about, was, because the, yeah, notion was it'd be turned into a state park.
Right.
And where would there, there was some, uh, schematics and ideas Barbara writes, uh, parking lot, um, area for people to go in and get, get access to the trails, um, and, you know, it's kind of a plan, and, and this is somewhat what we stacked, we did the task force, right, that the governor, um, asked us to, to do, and we kind of stacked hands on this green space, putting it together, and how it actually is going to look, and everything else, and where the access points are, all TBD, but it is.
Okay, so that TBD is kind of my question, right? Like, so what do I want the village board, as a resident, what do I want my village board to be messaging Barbara for the next step for Long Grove? I mean, we're funding this thing, it's basically our lobbyists, right? So what's our next step besides, we want this IDNR? I get that, green pathway, get it. But then for me, as a resident or any resident, what's in it for me? How do I connect to it? How do I use it? Where do I park? Where do I drive? Where do I bike? What's in it for me besides, I've got to get in my car with my bike on my, on my trunk to drive to parking lot?
I think you're, I think you're asking for the plan that it talks about, and what she's saying is, what I'm hearing, I don't know what she's, I, what I'm hearing is, the transfer is to basically close the door to a new ID, and then we get the plan, and, and then, so it's never meant to be without a plan.
Can I, can I add another comment to that, though? So you have another thing going, which we haven't seen yet, which I'm hoping it confronts is, is this pathway plan.
Right, right, right.
This pathway plan. And the thought is, is that, whether good or bad, because there could be bad to it, is that there would be, um, ways that our pathways could connect to it, so that you, if you had a pathway in your subdivision, which you don't, could somehow connect to connect to it. Because I know-
I could connect with you subdivision.
Yes, could connect to it, yeah. I could, I could easily connect it up north, and that would be my only way that I could get to downtown Long Grove.
Right, right, right.
I don't, I have no way to do it. I can go everywhere else. I can go to Lake Michigan. I can't go anywhere south. So I can go anywhere north. I can go, I can get to Wisconsin.
I can go anywhere.
I can get to Wisconsin safely from where I live.
I get to Route eighty-three. Now, I guess my point is simply this, thank you for all those comments. Well received, I get it. As Barbara and the group are doing their work, shouldn't they be prepared with, oh, by the way, here's what Long Grove is going to do or wants to do? So once we get this thing in the IDNR, moved over, in part of that discussion, wouldn't it be good for her to have that tool in her toolbox to say, and oh, by the way, here's what Long Grove residents want, or here's what Long Grove residents want? I mean, wouldn't that just be that logical, I mean, we're funding this. Shouldn't she be, like, advocating for Long Grove, not just the environment?
I'll let you answer it.
Barbara, this question got passed back to you.
Okay. I mean, I'll wing in a little bit. Any guidance you can give us is helpful. We did try to protect an area where you indicated an interest for a future possible passenger rail service. We are trying to advocate that you get, when they do the planning, that each village gets to weigh in. And that, we talked about some economic development possibilities up there near, what would that be, up closer to where President Jacob lives?
Both and Route eighty-three.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add in, not only is there an advantage in terms of your accessibility, so we're hoping to connect this on the southern end with the Millennium Trail and with Buffalo Creek. And on the northern end, it would connect already. There's an already established connection to the Des Plaines River Trail. What we find, in terms of economic development, it's very significant in terms of billions of dollars. We have a job set out in this whole county as environmental advocates to teach people what that means. Like, a little stat I learned recently, birding, so there'll be significant birding in this area, right? You have a lot of wetlands. Birding is a larger economic driver than the National Football League. This stuff is big. It would bring a lot of people to the area. It would bring a lot of economic development to the area. So there's that, too. It's also a huge hedge against flooding, because we're protecting these wetlands. So it won't just be the trail for the village. And we're hoping to get some kind of a venue, maybe, within the village boundaries, in some of these parcels that they purchased for the interchanges. Maybe a wedding venue or something like that, that's complementary facility to a state park, but you could still have some tax revenue from.
Barbara, I have a question. One of your points here, possibly begin to acquire parcels not owned by the state. Who do you see acquiring? And have those parcels been identified?
It's a super complicated question, because right now, the corridor is still under federal highway corridor protection. So it has to go through a whole pass, uh, part, process. Rocco Zaccaro, who used to work for the tollway and now works for Metro Strategies, kind of said to me, why aren't you already acquiring parcels? What are you waiting for? And I thought that was a very good point. We, there are funds, we can use federal funds to acquire these parcels, like the Land and Water Conservation Fund, for one. And we're wondering why we have to wait till there's a plan. Why not start acquiring these parcels now? Did that answer the question?
Yeah, I'm thinking about our open space fund.
Okay, so you kind of hit the point I'm trying to make, is, what if you get a plan for the next step? That's what I'm trying to get to. Should we put that little plan together and say, what if we identify these parcels? What if we identify these uses, the train station?
I think that's part of what they're doing, right?
Well, I guess, I guess I don't know what that is.
Yeah, you know, I had, I had actually asked Greg, and it never got done, Greg Jackson, to try to identify all the parcels that could be acquired along the Route fifty-three corridor. And that, there might be some work there, but it was never, it never got done. It was kind of one of those, like, never fully understood. I think Denise was working on it a little bit, never really fully understood it. But some of that we should go back to, and-
Yeah, if it's within village boundaries, I'd like to know.
There's stuff within village boundaries.
I'd like to know.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, it's, it's my understanding, Barb, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it's my understanding that not every inch has been spoken for in the twelve mile corridor.
Correct.
And some, some of it has been privately owned for years, decades.
We, we have a map, and I don't have it in front of me, because I should have brought that up, but it shows where the-
Where the holes are.
Where the holes are, right? We have, and actually, it was your organization, Barbara, that put that together, and the website on it.
Yeah, Open Lands.
Open Lands, yeah.
I have a moment, I'm believing that there aren't already tons of options, ratings by the land. You know, I have an option, I have an option to buy, I, I, you know, this has been in the works for so long.
Part of, part of the problem is that, you know, they, they couldn't do anything with the land, right? So they're just sitting on it. And so if you came to somebody and said, I want to buy it, they may sell it.
For how much?
I need our analysis on that. They presented it, the task force on it. President, maybe you remember it, but I think they said something like twenty-four parcels need to be acquired, and the vast majority of, all but like four, were owned by real estate investment trusts, which they felt was a good thing, that they probably would, were speculating on Route fifty-three, and now they might be willing to sell them.
Thank you. Sorry, we were in conversation. I just thought if we got somebody down in Springfield and meeting with our leaders, maybe that, for the Long Grove promotion would be pretty good.
I see, I see.
So, all right, so Kent, any comments? Dr. Jamil, any comments? Does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Some.
So just to reconfirm, we're approving the dollar amount of-
Thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Who's making that motion? Read it. Second by?
Second.
By trustee Chris Meyer. Local.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee Chris Meyer.
Hi.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee Jamil.
Hi.
Trustee Tanucci.
Hi.
All right, motion carried. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Barbara. Hope you feel better. All right, the village engineers report.
Okay. Village engineers report, and I get a couple highlights here. Before the meeting started, we had the groundbreaking for Village Hall, but we've already got the separate system moved and in service. The construction and conservator out earlier this week, taking the building corners, getting ready for starting excavation and building foundations next week. Road maintenance program, construction did start yesterday. They're starting with the joint road program between Long Grove, Kildare, and Eila Township. They're doing all of the underground sewer work first, storm sewer, that is. A lot of that's not in Long Grove, but they're going to do that first and then do, tackle all the roads at once. So I'll get an updated schedule on when the actual roadwork itself will start.
Yeah.
Well, there's inlets on, there's storm sewer work in Eila Township. They're doing the Eagle Creek subdivision. So they're doing some work up there. It's just not the road that they want. Jumping down to number five, this is the Lake Michigan water connection to Buffalo Grove. And Chris Sparkman, if you want to jump in, you can, but we had a meeting with the village of Buffalo Grove today. Very positive meeting to move forward with the, drafting the IGA.
Yep.
What's the next step? Jeff?
Yeah, Vic's going to help draft the IGA, and then go back to their attorneys and have that back and forth, and then we'll bring it forth to the board.
Yeah, and one of the things we wanted to do, I know Bobby wasn't able to make it today, but we wanted to have, like, a public meeting, as we discussed in the workshop. And that would give everyone that wasn't there the opportunity to say a few words about it as well, right? You know, the public wasn't there for the most part, so we wanted to do that at the next step, too. I don't know if next meeting, we're able to do that or the meeting after, so.
Jumping down, number seven, this is the speed tables on Checker Road. Those are reinstalled. I talked to the sparkman earlier today. Those probably remain in place as long as they can be because of the Arlington Heights Road construction.
Can I just ask another question? So in light of emails I've been getting, a lot of them, and some phone calls, one idea also was to put another stop sign on Checker at Bordeaux. And I don't know how, if that's even possible, or, there's two Bordeaux streets, but one of those, to put an extra stop sign is another thing to slow people down, so.
Next to the Fred sign?
Right.
Could be next to the Fred sign. Yeah, next to Fred's street sign, yes. So I don't, I don't know, I don't know if it's possible.
If that question is directed to me, it would have to meet warrants. There's eight different warrants for a stop sign, and they're a lot based on amount of traffic. And, you know, intersection, if you're putting it on Bordeaux, you know, no problem. If you're trying to incorporate a speed, a stop sign on Checker with a T-intersection, the warrants become very difficult to meet.
So is that something just, I don't know how hard it is, is that something you can at least look at? Because I've gotten calls and emails on that, too. Is another deterrent can just put one on Bordeaux? How hard is that to solve that?
So is that a ten-minute exercise to say no?
There are two issues. One is whether you meet the warrants, and that's a series of engineering tests that would have to be met. Could we do it otherwise and just put it up there? Yes, we can. If we do that, however, without having met the warrants, one could argue that we have created knowingly an unsafe condition, because it doesn't meet the warrants, which makes the toward immunity that we would ordinarily have in connection with our roads subject to challenge. And I would not be a big fan of encouraging that. So, I, no, I'm funny that way, but.
You like-
I'm glad you got my joke.
You like the full employment act, but not that one.
No, I don't, no, no.
We say that, right?
But it's the, it's the same problem. And Bordeaux is even worse, because you come up the hill.
Mm-hmm.
And at great speeds, a lot of them, you know, somebody's walking their dog, you're in trouble, right? So you can't put up those stop signs, but put another.
People are speeding on my road.
Everywhere.
I mean, and they're curving. I almost got T-boned. Yeah, there's a, there's a sign on the other side, on the north side of Arlington Heights, saying blind driveway. That would be mine. I was turning left into my own driveway. I almost got T-boned.
Didn't say blind driver. It said blind driveway.
Yeah, blind driveway.
Okay, got it.
And we got, and we've got people putting cones in the middle of my road.
Yeah, I see that. All right, well, I mean, you're saying it's very difficult? Would it take a long time?
So seven of the eight are based on traffic. There's one that's safety, so I can investigate that one a little bit, because I think that might be the one, if it is warranted, that it would meet.
If it's not, it doesn't take a lot of energy, I would just ask, because if the answer's no, then that's what we tell the residents, that, thank you.
And just while I'm on the topic of traffic calming, trustee Tanucci asked for the division pylons on Oakland. Those were installed yesterday to, what was the, the Dukes of Hazzard maneuver that was happening over there?
Yeah.
I don't remember how you said it. So, so those are in there. We'll see how those function. Arlington Heights Road's under construction, mostly on the south end, you know, it's Lake Cook. There's traffic barricades, you know, limiting it to one lane in each direction throughout the whole length from Lake Cook to Route eighty-three. So certain times of the day, I would encourage avoiding it.
That's a part of what these people, they find themselves on there, and then they're egg-eating the charger.
Yep. So hopefully, hopefully the word gets out that it's congested and, you know, find another route before you get on it and have to find another route.
Yes, make an oh fifty-three challenging.
Correct, correct. So those were the main highlights. If there's any other questions, happy to post them.
I guess no more questions, right? So.
Number eleven.
Yeah.
It says eleven easements expire in twenty twenty. So what's the, what's the deal? The easements are already expired, so what's, what's the secret or?
So there's two different issues. One, you may recall, I think it was the last meeting, the village renewed a temporary easement that had expired, I think, in twenty twenty-one. But in addition to the village temporary easement, there are temporary easements on other private properties along the corridor. So that's up to IDOT to go back and renew those, just as they came to us to renew the one that we previously granted.
Well, so these are theirs.
Yes.
I got it.
Yeah.
So what happens when that expires? What are, what are the options of the owners that can-
The owners can, you know-
Say no?
Well, IDOT can always condemn a temporary easement. That's kind of silly. So most people do grant these temporary easements. It's just a matter of how much they are to receive for it. I didn't mean to preempt you, Jeff.
Thank you. I have a question on fifteen A. Maybe I didn't read it in the earlier one. Am I reading this correctly, that Indian Creek Road's going to be closed?
Yes, yes, you are correct. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So we were talking about those speed signs, putting them up there. We're going to have our own traffic control device there. It's going to be a closed road. We won't have to worry about cut-through for a while. Yeah. It'll be a pain in the butt for me, because I-
I, would you be, not just you, I would think, a lot of people.
Yeah, because I go that way, so, yes.
What it was, you were to ask, I'm going to do that.
There you go. I, I have, I did text, I did text Dominic, so I'll see where that goes, so, yes. I mean, anything else?
End of report.
I mean, my, it's now, it's the president and trustee reports. The only thing I'll mention, you know, I interviewed a candidate for the AC as a commissioner. I'll be bringing him before the board at the next meeting. Seems like a great candidate, skills in building, and it's hard to find those things, so. And then, that's all I have. Trustee Borowski.
I'm not going to report per se, but maybe one of the conversation. I was wondering if the village board had any appetite to revisit the current tree ordinance that we had in place. The residents, you know, we have a very diverse community in terms of the parcels within the subdivisions, the parcels that aren't in subdivision, the sizes of the, of the parcels, and frankly, the ability for the residents to take care of them. You know, speaking of my own personal challenges, you know, my three and a half acres is almost a mini farm.
Right. But yet, you know, my HOA doesn't really allow me to put them up on and run my tractor around. It'll be helpful, but, but the reality is that we have such a diversity. And the tree ordinance, really, I think, in my opinion, is something that's designed to make sure that we're not cutting down the good trees, whatever they are, which is fine. But yet, the ordinance is quite onerous for the application process. And I think the permit itself, once it's issued, is pretty onerous on the residents to replant the trees, because we go by the inches at DBH diameter breast height. So you cut down a fifteen-inch tree kind of thing, and you end up having to replant, I don't know how many inches of tree, but sometimes you just can't do it. You have, you don't have places to put that same number of trees back in, being small little trees. And I know we have a remedy for that, in terms of putting it on public property, or paying some money, or whatever the deal is, but, but it's really quite onerous, actually. I mean, we're trying to protect a certain species of trees, which is good, protect the trees, but forcing people to come through and jump through hoops on this permit is crazy, frankly. You know, we, you know, I had a conversation with staff, and staff basically wanted me to fill out the application, get a tree survey, sign the waiver that says, you know, I agree to everything in the future if I ever do anything wrong, agree to pay Vic's fees, agree to pay Jeff's fees, which I don't even know what they are, because it's not stated. So essentially, for me to go through and cut buckthorn and box elder and crap like that, that we all don't want, I still have to go through the process.
Not true, not true. Buckthorn, no issues. And I don't even know about box elders. You probably, if it's not one of those protected trees, buckthorn, you can take down. Everyone's doing it.
Well, I understand that. So if it's buckthorn, but my question to the board is, can we revisit the process and whether or not that tree permitting process is what we want? If it's a developer coming in bulldozing forty acres, I get it, different, different class. But if it's a house and a resident, can we make it easier to protect the trees we want to protect and then sort of let people do their thing?
I think, and also, I would be open to having a discussion, like, what is the philosophy? What's the public interest that we want to hold, we want to pride, and then say, is this in fact achieving that?
Perfect, because that's my lead in to point number two I wanted to bring up today. Conservancy, CNA corridor, conservancy area, easements. What do we want those to be? And the reason I bring that up is I have three, two or three black walnut trees that are planted about a square feet, sitting in my conservancy area. You know, I can't cut down the black walnut, everybody wants that, right? But is that what we want? Do we want black walnut trees? Do we want oak trees? Do we want prairie grass? What do we want that conservancy period to look like? Right now, if you look around the village, in the years I've lived here, it has grown in intensely with buckthorn and a whole bunch of garbage that we don't want. Your Kruger Road is a tunnel, right? It's a tunnel. Eighty-three, you used to be able to see the berm of Royal Melbourne as you drive through. You saw the nice big majestic houses. You saw a little bit of the, of the golf course. It was a great pleasant view. Right now, driving through there, no offense to Royal Melbourne, but it's similar to everywhere else. It's all just buckthorn growing everywhere, and just walls are green. Could we charge or ask the conservancy, CSC, I can do it?
To that, Barbara.
Right. Can we ask them to go through and do a comprehensive, I don't know, analysis or reset or something? We've got to get rid of this buckthorn, because we don't, and we have grants, I know we've been doing that, but so far we're getting like nine positions, right? But what if? But what if we did a total reset? Something that said, for the next three years or five years, whatever it takes, we want residents to mow that crap out, like mow it down, like figure out a way to give them a big old tractor with a big brush cutter and mow that crap down and start over. You know, just an education program, a, expanding on the grant program, provide other resources for residents to be able to sort of reset these corridors. But before we do that, define what we want them to be. Do we want them to be oak? Black walnut? Or do we want them to be creepy? Want them to be wild walnuts? What do we want them to be? And then give everybody some guidance as how to do it. Because frankly, you know, I talked to Chris the other day, Diamond Lake Road, just south of Indian Creek Road, there's a resident that borders Diamond Lake Road just south of that intersection. They pulled out all their buckthorns. They put that berm in, yeah. They replanted it. They put their fence in. They put a bunch of yard art in. So you have this house that completely destroys the whole scenic corridor thing in a sense, but it's actually quite beautiful because it's manicured. It's landscaped, it's grass, it's replanted, and now the neighbor's starting to do it as well. So you have two properties up there that look beautiful. And then all around it is nothing but grown in crappy, ugly buckthorn. So is it better from a real estate perspective, from a home value perspective, for us to get away from these conservancy scenic corridors or change them to something else? I know I can cut grass and how I can plant plants and flowers and stuff. I can't control the buckthorn. I can't keep up with it. It's, the village is evident that we can't keep up with it. So my question to you guys is, should we charge, ask the speed, the speed, to maybe take a look at it from a totally different perspective? And one that is thinking way outside the box? Like, what do we do to get this village, I hate to say it, looking nice again? Because it's all grown in.
Well, and it's looking nice. And is it always the same? I, when you send that, is it always the same?
Well, it's all buckthorn now, but yeah, but to your point, what should it be, right? Or where should it be? I agree with you. Good points.
I think a lot of people know they have conservancy, but they don't know what to do with it. They just, they, all they, I think some people see nothing. They look at it and they don't see it. You know, I'm hearing somebody like that. You know, there could be a room full of flowers in here, and he wouldn't see them, you know? He couldn't smell them, but whatever. But I, I, I think that you... There's one lady in particular who said, could you see that? And it was this thing, like you're describing, across the street from her. And she said, that's just gotten worse and worse. Every year, they do nothing. It's terrible. It's an eyesore, blah, 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 blah. And people just don't know. And they're, they have those, you can get grants, actually, for tree cities. Hawthorne Woods actually just got one a little year or so ago on an Arbor Town award kind of thing. Because the climate people are saying, we're really going to need trees for shade purposes in the next 10 to 20 years for our kids and grandkids and stuff like that. And I agree with what you're saying, you know? Why, maybe have an award, you know? Maybe have red ribbons, blue ribbons, gold ribbons, whatever for people. You know, it doesn't have to be anything big, but to create something like that would be really, I think, a good thing all the way around.
Because we used to have the, we used to have signs up. I don't know if you remember, there were signs, placards that said, this is scenic corridor, right?
Yes, yes.
Those are all gone. You hardly ever see those sitting around the village.
No, they're behind the buckthorn.
You are the bottom.
You're spot on. And, you know, even like we're done, do you have that trail along Diamond Lake Road?
Yes.
That's because it's grown in.
Yes, it has. It's a mess. It's a mess.
So why don't we just mow some of this stuff down and start from scratch?
So what's your, Kent, do you have anything to say here, or Dr. Jamil?
I mean, you're right, what you're saying. Everything's all overgrown. That's an enormous job.
I know.
And...
People love...
Just cutting it down isn't enough beside the stump. Otherwise, it'll come right back again. And even then, it'll come right back again.
Right, cut one, twenty grow back. I get it, I get it.
So, I mean, what's the, so you want, I mean, what's the ask of the CSCC, right? And we can do that, I just, do we need to be clear on what we're going to ask them to do?
What I'm hearing is, we have these scenic corridors. Don't think about what the code says or what they have been. What do you think they should be? That's what I heard.
And how do we get there? Well, you know, what kind of resources?
First, you need to provide it then.
Because really, I think, you know, my buckthorn, man, the best thing I could do to my scenic corridor is put a brush cutter to it right now. I mean, it's that bad. It can't pull that stuff out. I can't pull it off fast enough. I just chop it all down and start over.
It grows thicker when you cut it.
So is that enough instruction, I mean, that we, for them, to take a look at our scenic corridor as it is today? What should it be?
Would you work with them on that?
Sure, we have to show them. Make buckthorn.
No, you know it is.
No, I would. I think it's important. This village, I mean, really, when you drove through it, it used to be like...
I believe some people like the buckthorn. First of all, they don't even know it's called buckthorn or what buckthorn is. They like the privacy as it comes though. So that'll be a little bit of a...
That gets bad.
I get that. So what's the happy compromise in that case, Kent? Do we go, maybe some parcels, you want buckthorn, we give up because it's okay in those areas?
I'm not saying we give up. I'm just saying it's that... There's a little more involved than educating people because some people like it because of the screaming.
And it gets back to diversity of lots that we have, right? Quarter acre versus ten acre. They require different things.
Well, and I think, based on what you just said, if they're presented with alternatives, you know, we understand. We're telling you, this stuff is invasive. It's going to take over. Yes, it's private. You need to remove it because it's going to be your own piece of property. And here are options. Here are things you can do to get the privacy thing in. Yeah, I think they just...
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just saying you're going to have to probably do that some...
Well, some of them will say...
So what I heard is Chris is willing to work with the CSCC to give them some ideas on what to look at and come back and advise us on. And it's along the lines of, what should we do with the scenic corridors, the conservancies? Fresh sheet of paper, maybe? And...
Beehive and clock cameras. Buckthorn.
But yeah, it's really interesting to me because really, it's a totally different environment. You're driving through 30 years ago, and right now, it's pretty bad.
All right.
I think it would be, maybe correlated with that, the entrances to the village should, could be so much more attractive.
See, Dr. Jamil was looking to volunteer for something like that. Little entrance. Borowski's done volunteering.
You know, when you think about it...
You're right. You're absolutely right.
You know, if you're going to, if you're going to do the job, do it well. And let people know you're in Long Grove. And maybe, you know, what's most appropriate of it up near the northern areas is forest preserve or prairies, prairie grass, because that's what grows there in that spot naturally.
Right.
To work with the mother nature instead of against it, kind of thing.
And to the, to the earlier, to your comment, I guess, getting onto that. Prairie grass and walnut trees are incongruous. Because soon as the walnut come in, I can't cut them down anymore. Or I got to replant 40 of them.
Just pull them when they first start.
Well, I know. Eight inches I can cut, you trust it. I don't trust me to look at it. But they're incongruous, incongruous, I don't know.
Incongruous.
Just all the other crap that comes with forested land comes in. You know, all of a sudden, you got all this crap that came and identified as growing under this stupid walnut tree that shades everything else out. So that's the question.
You know, Dave Love Spike worked, Dave worked, I don't know how many hours, getting Menards to create, to build a different block for us because of where it is, you know? So those kinds of things kind of get lost in shuffle when it's like, you know, there was so much work that went into making this nice.
Okay, so end of report? End of report, okay. Trustee Jamil.
So with regards to the agenda. So when the agenda is sent out, I think it goes sent out on Friday. So what I've been seeing in the email is keeping on having some updates. So if we can have those updates for the next meeting, that would be great because there's no time to read. It's the day of the meeting and the morning, I'm getting all these emails about updates, which sometimes I'm unable to take a look at.
I hear you loud and clear. So the agenda packet that gets sent out on Thursday or Friday, whatever it is, needs to be complete, and there shouldn't be stuff added to it, like today. But I mean, I know there was a special case with the bills report because of the holiday, kind of messed up the accountant getting it. But I'm 100% in board with you because I go down, it'll be a Sunday or Saturday. I sit down and I read everything, and then I pretty much work all the way till I get here. And if stuff is coming in that day, I don't, I don't have time to look at it. So I get your point. I heard loud and clear, so, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's topical for our folks.
Yeah. Well, you're doing the same thing. You're working, you know, you're a physician, and you ran here, and you're almost going to show up in your scrubs, right? That's how close it was, right?
So is there actual end line you have for anything that should go into the package? Can we put a kind of a rock end line in place?
Well, that's what we've been trying to do. I've been trying to say that even if stuff doesn't, like by Wednesday, that we can't have stuff that's not wrapped up showing up in the board packet on a Monday.
On a Monday.
It just, it doesn't work. And so that's what I've been working with Chris and team on, and I think that's kind of it. You got to get, if that agenda gets set, you got to have everything ready. And then Friday, whenever it is Friday when you publish it, I mean, there's going to be exceptions, but it's been a lot lately, so, yeah. Message received and heard. I have the same issue. And believe me, I go through it a fine-tooth comb as well, so. Anything else? All right, trustee Chris Meyer?
Not really. Meeting with Chris and the financial consultant tomorrow, which would do a deep dive on the TIPS forecast and plan on try to shift some of that over and get some more full-time focus on it. At least more full-time, not totally full-time, but better focus on it.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, trustee O'Connor.
No report.
Trustee Tanucci.
Nothing to report.
Village manager to report.
Nothing other than looking forward to the deep dive on TIPS tomorrow, 9:00 AM, yeah.
All right, so does somebody want to make a motion? Who, by trustee O'Connor? No executive. Seconded by trustee Chris Meyer. All in favor? Any names? Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1792.92]